Okay, candid. So you're going up on this this person. Idea. So not candid.
Tina. Hi, how are you? I never get to see you. How's it going? It's going? You ain't going anywhere, are ya? Everybody's failing. You have to do not leave us. You are doing a great job. Okay. But when you but when you need people and you need resources, you have to.
I don't know. We told her that.
You know what I'm saying? Was. And I was on. It is. It is. No. And then, okay, we're done checking off it. No, it's never changed. Plus technology's not changing. I can't see. What what does it say? I can't see behind John. Okay. One minute. Everybody will start to take their seats. We got one minute. I got it. Oh, yeah. Hello? Am I on? Hello? Okay, thirty seconds. If everyone could take their seats, please. Thirty seconds. I'm emphatic about starting on time. Five seconds. Good afternoon and welcome to Polk County Public Schools Work Session for March ninth, twenty twenty-one. And I'd like to thank everyone, the board members and those in our audience who are with us here today. And so at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. John Hill, who's gonna walk us through our work session agenda items this afternoon. Mr. Hill?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Board, Staff and Community Members. We're gonna start our discussion items today with our health plan, twenty twenty plan, year annual financial review. And Ms. King is going to lead that off for us today. Thank you, Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Hill, Board Chair, School Board Members. We appreciate the opportunity to come and present the status of our health plan. As we know, twenty twenty was a difficult year, and we're gonna go through some of that. I need to bring up Zoom, I guess. We have another guest, a part of our team to present. It's gonna be on Zoom. Thank you. So today we have presenting, we have Allison Poole, who will be joining us via Zoom. And she's with Wakely and Associates, the district's actuary. And then we have Jan Bush with Robinson Bush also here with me presenting today. So I'm gonna start out with Mrs. Poole, talking a little bit about the the requirements for the annual filing under the health plan. Allison, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Good to see you, Allison. Thank you.
Thank you. I really appreciate this opportunity and also appreciate you being able to accommodate a Zoom meeting for me. So the the annual self-funded health plan has to complete is required by the Florida Department of Insurance. It's required under Florida statute one twelve oh eight. Essentially, what we are doing, my company, is we are certifying that the plan is actuarially sound. And what that means is that you.
I'm sorry, Allison. Can we hold off just a moment? We're trying to improve the audio quality here on our end.
Sure.
I'm not sure if it's your headset or if it's on our end. Okay. All right. Wanna try again?
Is that better?
I'm not sure. It could be it could be your microphone, perhaps. I don't know if you have.
See, is this better?
Yes.
Okay.
That's that's better. Thank you.
Okay. Well, again, thank you. I appreciate it. Appreciate you taking the time to make sure you can hear me. So what we're doing is each year, we certify that the we need to certify that the plan is actuarially sound. So what that means is that we expect that as an ongoing entity, it will continue without any sort of financial issues. So we look at the assets of the plan. So we need to know that the assets will is are sufficient to pay any outstanding claims when we in in twenty twenty, we know that there are still claims we paid for that year. So we're making sure that the the surplus is sufficient to pay that amount. We are also looking at the rate structure of the plan going forward to ensure that we that the revenue that the plan takes in will cover expenses. And we also are looking to make sure that there are there is enough surplus going forward. So that's the actuarially those are the actuarially sound pieces. So I'm on the the next slide now. So the the filing is required to be uploaded to the Office of Insurance Regulation ninety days, no later than ninety days after the end of each plan year. So that means around March thirty first is when we is our target date for filing. The the work starts usually in February, but we are filing in March. The as it's as you can see, the my credentials are that I'm a member of the American Academy of Actuaries and a society and an associate of the Society of Actuaries. So I meet the qualifications. Again, it's actuarially soundness, the the we've had if anyone who's been around this plan for a while, we know that the we're always looking at the surplus to ensure that the surplus is positive. We cannot certify certify that the plan is actuarially sound if there is a negative surplus. So the Office of Insurance Regulation likes to look at to see sixty days of claims as a surplus. And what that means is that they look at the the next year's claims, and they want to the surplus to have at least sixty days of those projected claims for the next year. And that is what they consider their safe harbor surplus. And if you have sixty days of claims, then they don't ask additional questions. Under that, they they do ask questions. Generally, they what they want is to see that there are funds in some other unencumbered account that can be used to support the health plan if it's if needed. And I believe, Jan?
Great.
Are you taking this?
Yes, Jan, would you like to start with the?
Sure.
Annual financial performance?
Perfect, yes. So the first slide that we have here is a depiction of what happened in twenty twenty. So we started the year in that dark green line at the top with a negative surplus balance, which meant that this actuary couldn't certify the plan. But we did submit the plan with a letter that stated that we acknowledged that this plan is not meeting your safe harbor requirement, but we are working toward with the plan to try to build some surplus. So what this is showing is that you actually did in twenty twenty have revenue that was exceeded your expenses, about four hundred, four point four million dollars. Plus, we had a change in that incurred but not reported or the claims reserve that's included in the SAP balance of a half another half a million dollars. So we ended up adding almost five million dollars in surplus to the plan, which took us out of that four point two million dollar deficit to an actual positive of about seven hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Now, when we look at those days, that is a calculation of the incurred claims expense. So the as Allison was mentioning, the Office of Insurance Regulation that more or less reviews these filings, looks to see what your incurred claims calculation is, what Allison is projecting, and they'll do the math and determine how much each day is worth. And it's about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a day right now. So we're we're about two and a half days in in reserves for twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty. So any questions on that? And we like to give you a little bit of a history about what the group insurance history is with the with the fund. And we take this back to twenty thirteen. We've tracked it since many, many, many years before that. And it's one of those things where it's gone up and down from year to year. But if you look at twenty thirteen, we had a board contribution at that time of five hundred and ninety-four dollars for every active employee that was on the plan. We had revenues of about ninety-six point six million. You can see the expenses were much lower than that. So we had a ten million dollar gain that year. And the group insurance balance, that's the balance that the insurance regulators are looking at in Tallahassee, was exceeded the sixty-day safe harbor of almost thirteen million dollars. So you can follow that down to see what has occurred since twenty thirteen. The board contribution stayed at five ninety-four for the next several years until July of twenty eighteen, when the board increased that contribution by sixty dollars. And we still had a deficit because we only had six months of that revenue. And at that time, our G R our G I balance was very much underwater at fourteen million dollars. So knew some very dramatic things needed to happen. So you can see in twenty nineteen, there was another sixty dollar increase in July of that year. We had a ten million dollar gain that year. So so it was a good year. That's where we ended with the four point two million dollar deficit as of twelve thirty-one of twenty nineteen. And this year, we actually we added about that five billion dollars I mentioned, and that brings us to the seven hundred and eighty-three thousand. We need about nineteen million. So we still have a ways to go. But we're going in the right direction. Allison, we would like to just show you that your expenses are really very much in line with the with what you would hope to see. And that's that ninety-five percent, over ninety-five percent of the expenses that are coming through the the group insurance fund are there for claims in your clinic. So they're directly providing care to your to your employees and their family members. So the A S O fees are a very small part. Any other adjustments that happen expense-wise into the plan are very, very minimal. So it's a well, you know, and just in terms of the leanness of how the plan is run, it's not a lot of added-on administration and and so forth. And I it's a self-funded plan. I don't know if everyone knows that. So it's every dollar is your dollar that comes out of this plan. You don't buy insurance from an insurance company. So every time we can save a dollar, it's a dollar that we save you. So we did have a bad year in twenty twenty. And one of the issues that really didn't help where we thought we might be at the end of twenty twenty is the impact of high-cost claims. And we looked at this, we look at the break at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And if you go to the far right, you can see that there were seventy-three claims that were paid in twenty twenty over the hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold for a total of about twenty-three and a half million dollars. And then those next lines are the top five claims. So you can see we had some really high-cost claims, and the average cost per claim is three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. You can look back at the previous years to see what occurred prior to that. So you can see that twenty seventeen was a bad year, twenty eighteen. Twenty nineteen was a really good year in terms of high-cost claimants at about fourteen million. But the impact of having almost, well, nine million dollars more in high-cost claims than what occurred the previous year is a really problematic issue that I mean, that's what insurance is for, right? To help people that have these catastrophic events and hopefully get better. It's just extremely expensive, and it has a big impact on on the on the plan. Well, we wanted to show you what the top conditions are. Probably no surprise that cancer is is the number one. There's just an awful lot of cancer. There were twenty-nine cases and that were paid in twenty twenty for almost ten and a half million dollars last year. We had some kidney issues, pulmonary musculoskeletal, which is a a big a big issue. We don't usually see too many musculoskeletals going whopper-sized, but it's getting more expensive. And there's some nice implant implantable devices and things that are costing a lot more money. Heart, obviously. But I think the point here is, you know, if we can put ourselves in front of some of these really horrible chronic conditions with wellness and other types of strategies, hopefully, we can have less of these kinds of cases going into the future.
Yeah, one piece, Jan, if I could add on that, is that when we took a look at the claims overall, the majority of our money is being spent on what's called metabolic conditions, which primarily are obesity and related conditions. If you look at diabetes, some forms of cancer, there's usually three forms of cancer, whether it be genetic sometimes. But it also can be metabolic-related, right, that increases your chances of cancer. But and there are some environmental as well. So it's not all truly from that. But looking at all of our claims overall, we paid over forty-two and a half million dollars on claims related to metabolic syndrome. So and that's no surprise with really Polk or Polk County in general, if you look at our claims overall. And you look at all of that, there's a number of our employees that struggle with that, even in the United States in general, right? That was a huge issue with COVID this year, was a lot of people, and I'll talk about that a little bit later, but a lot of people started addressing their health and really got scared. And we're gonna show you next about COVID claims. And everybody thinks COVID had an impact, and it did. But we shouldn't lose sight of the fact that the main issue with our group is our overall health that needs to improve, and our choices and things we're doing, which are tied to our wellness programs and other behavior choices, which certainly can help lower that dollar considerably. And we've had some very good success stories through our health center. But that's part of a separate conversation. Yes?
Well, and speaking, I'm glad you mentioned COVID, because we do have a footnote on this slide that shows the large claim activity with respect to COVID. In twenty twenty, we just had one case, but it was three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Yeah, we had many more cases, but they weren't to that level of expense. And then in twenty twenty-one, I looked at your January claims. You actually had two large claims that were COVID-related, that were paid in January. But there were a total of seven claims that paid in January over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it was kind of unfortunate to hear that. Hopefully, we don't see that pattern continue for for this year. And as Linda was mentioning, we do receive information from Florida Blue about the impact of COVID on the health plan from a cost perspective. It's almost seven point eight million dollars since they started having a diagnosis of COVID that would be coming across in claims detail. And you can see the breakdown inpatient, obviously, is very, very expensive, outpatient, physician, laboratory for testing and things like that, and then all other. So you can see there is an impact of of COVID that hit the plan that was not necessarily anticipated to occur. And unfortunately, it did. And I'm sorry that this slide looks a little bit messy, a little busy. But these are the projections for twenty twenty-one, where we are this year, and how we think we could finish out this year, and then twenty twenty-two. And it is required as part of Allison's actuarial review and submission to the state that projections are placed into the filing. And on the top graph, we just kind of wanted to show you again, going back to twenty nineteen, the board added sixty dollars to the plan July first, still had a negative balance of fourteen days as of July, as of December thirty-one of twenty nineteen. In twenty twenty, July first, the board put in sixty dollars, which is where we are today, had a little over two days. In twenty twenty-one, if the board were to put in forty dollars, an additional forty dollars on July first, the the expected impact would be your G I balance would be a little over six point eight million dollars. So we would have twenty days toward that sixty-day requirement. And in twenty twenty-two, if the board put in another forty dollars, then it would add to almost eight point nine million dollars or twenty-five days. And it's just an illustration. You know, the board's gonna do what you can do, but this is just an illustration. And this is how the exhibits that you saw as an additional attachment to your agenda item showed the forty dollars. But that doesn't mean you're committed to that. It's just to illustrate the impact that the actuary projects would happen or likely happen if you did that. If the board didn't put in the forty dollars, that's the graph below where we said forty dollars, January one, January one, the employees had a forty-dollar premium. This would be the impact in twenty twenty-two. It would have an impact in those six months, July through December of twenty twenty-one, when the board's forty dollars would not be in there. So instead of a six point eight million dollar G I balance, it would be closer to four million dollars if the board didn't put the forty dollars in on July first. And that would reduce the days from twenty to about twelve. And then if the employees kicked in the forty dollars, January first of twenty twenty-two, the board, the G I balance would be about six million dollars or seventeen days versus the eight point eight million and twenty-five days. Does that make sense?
So the reason that we included this comparison was the board's been generous enough and fiscally responsible over the last several years to make this contribution to bring our health plan into the positive. And we wanted you and our employees to see that had you not contributed, it would have fallen back on our employees. And and this would be the impact. We just wanted to give you the full picture.
Great, Heather. And and just to keep in mind, this is just funding. There are obviously plan design issues. Your expenses drive how much money you need. So your current plan design is what all these projections are based on. No changes to your plan design, and only strictly putting new money into the plan to cover what's expected to occur based on the assumptions. So the next steps.
Yes, next steps, you know, as as Heather mentioned, rather than pushing this on employees, you know, we did make some minor changes along the way, but to be honest, not much. And last year, I made very incremental changes. Couple of the changes we made basically were we have a lab capitation we already pay for, which provides basically free lab services to employees. And if you all remember, you got a new card. Hopefully, you have that card that says Quest on it now, over on the right-hand side. But that reminds you when you go to your provider to tell them to send your labs to Quest. That saves the employee a considerable amount of money because we're already paying for that lab benefit. The other change we made was what they call a co-pay co-pay coupon program, which a lot of drug manufacturers give money for for using some of these biologic, these very expensive medications. Well, what we did is have that money come to the employer rather than to the employee. The employee still gets that drug for zero or five dollars, very inexpensive cost. But then the the planned credit from the drug manufacturer comes back to the employer. That's predicted to save us over eight hundred thousand dollars this year. So again, these were pretty simple things that didn't involve a lot of heartburn on the employees. They were simple and easy things that were definitely savings available to us. And we also put in place this year a wellness incentive. We did a voluntary, what we call, health survey. Part of the struggle with a wellness program is you really need to get the information on all your employees' general overall health to really know how to target your programs. We still have a number of employees that don't file any claims, which, to be honest, is good and bad, because it's bad in that we don't know anything about their health. They could be a heart attack waiting to happen, or some other things waiting to happen. And they may have underlying conditions that we could get ahead on. So one thing we did is roll out an incentive program where the employee can get a fifty-dollar one-time gift card this calendar year by doing two things. The voluntary health quotient, it's called, is through Blue Cross Blue Shields Wellness Portal. It's available to you to log on. They have an app. You can log on and and fill out the health survey. And one wellness visit. And that can even be at our health centers. That could be a blood draw. That could be just a checkup. It could be a cancer screening, anything of that thing. And for that, they get fifty dollars. What I'm trying to do is get employees to start thinking about their health overall, and perhaps incentivizing them will help. One thing with COVID, I kind of mentioned that we had a lot of people get engaged. We had over twenty-five hundred wellness visits during COVID last year in our health centers. And I think that's important because, you know, so many people were scared, and we were able to get telehealth set up pretty quickly with Healthstat through the health centers. But a lot of people still were going in when they could. There was a time period we had to shut down and not allow labs. But when they could go in, they were going in to get their their blood work done. So I think it's important to realize that of that twenty-five hundred, only eight hundred were part of the diabetic program here that required them to do that. So the others were just coming in for wellness checkups and to start talking about their health. So I think that was very good. And we also outreach to employees that were at high risk, that we had health data on. Healthstat gets our health data from Blue Cross. So they were making calls out to employees that were at high risk for different conditions, and offering some assistance, offering some counseling, and offering for them to perhaps come in if they needed to get control of their of their health condition. We also rolled out this year some additional programs to help with, we're dealing with diabetics, but not prediabetics and everybody else that's kind of lining up to get there eventually. Their hyperlipidemia, which deals with cholesterol issues, and also hypertension, which is affecting a lot of employees in their early thirties now, mid-thirties. And we also rolled out a weight loss program also. And we're doing, we have some other plans, lunch and learns, some other things. And we're doing a lot of things virtually through Healthstat as well. We also have a Facebook page that we're promoting as well for wellness. That puts out a lot of information about our program.
Just to clarify for you.
Yes.
I missed something? No, no, just that the staff doesn't know, they don't get information about individuals with any condition. It's all, everything is aggregate reporting, de-identified. It's goes through the Blues and it goes through Healthstat, and the district does not have any access to that information.
Thank you, Jan. Yeah, when I was talking about that, it meant that it was Healthstat calling our employees, not district. Thank you. Questions? Yes?
Yeah, I have one. So I I was very pleased to be a part of the rollout. So I was very pleased to be a part of the rollout originally of the health clinics in Polk County. As you probably may remember, for those that were here, we started in Haynes City, which was such a blessing. And then, of course, we've moved now and have a second one in Lakeland. I know that we're expanding Lakeland, continuing to expand because of the need, which is awesome. And I understand from talking to the folks that I go to the Lake, to the Haynes City one, that they're in need of expansion as well. Is that anywhere on the table? I mean, I know they're in a finite location until one of the other businesses would move. For example, there's a lot that you can do in the Lakeland one that you don't have access to in Haynes City. And I know that, you know, you get a referral for x-rays and I forget whatever else when I ask. But I was just wondering, is that on the plan or based on these numbers, we're not able to do that?
We just, actually, I just talked with Mrs. Usher just this past week, and one of our thoughts were before Mr. Perone left, that we were looking at actually a second, a third location in North Lakeland, but we have to find the funding for that.
Sure.
That's the, and it would be using the same template or model, but that was our thought. And that would help relieve Haynes City, perhaps, some of that. To be honest, Haynes City, everybody loves the location, so.
I'm thinking if you're going to do a third one, I mean, my two cents would be central.
Yeah.
I mean, I wouldn't do two in Lakeland, huh?
I was saying Winter Haven, Auburn Hills.
Right, right. Yeah, that would be great. Yeah, whatever. But I just think because it's obviously cost-effective, your numbers show it, and they show it every single year.
Sure.
What a blessing it is to have that. And it's much easier to go to your own health clinic and schedule an appointment and whatever than having to sometimes get into other places. I guess everybody's experiences are probably different, but I think it's just one of the smartest moves we ever did as a board is to start that in this county for our employees and just wondered when the time comes. Yeah, if you can add a third center, oh, wow. But I understand financially, it's difficult, but I'm glad to hear that at least it's being discussed. So thank you.
Yeah, and we have over 90% capacity, which is why we're struggling with opening the other area of Lakeland. And we may have to look at some other telehealth and some other expansions just to be able to support us until we can get to that third, the availability for a third center. So, yes.
Okay, thank you.
We have a question.
Yes, Ms. Fields?
Yeah.
Thank you. I don't know if there's any way to track the savings of having the clinics in place. Maybe not, but I know that there has to be significant savings in us having the clinics. And I know that we've talked about adding an additional clinic in Polk County, and I would imagine that when that time comes, an assess, some type of assessment would be done to see exactly where the greatest need is. And then the other thing, Ms. King, I know the answer, but I just want to maybe have you to publicly say the answer. I believe last year, one of our, well, let me just say, last year was stated that our health plan had been fixed. And I know from the information that you guys are presenting today and what you presented before, is our health plan has not been fixed, and we've been working, trying to get to 60 days for a long window of time.
Yes.
And we haven't, we have our ups and we have our downs, whatever the reasons may be, we know that. But I just want to make sure that it is understood that our health plan is not fixed. Is that correct, Ms. King?
Well, correct. I mean, we've made some gains, but you are correct. I mean, had it not been for COVID, you know, we would have had a lot more money. But to be honest, we seem to see the cycle every three or four years with our large claimants. And as you're seeing, the healthcare is getting more expensive, which is not a surprise, right? I mean, the new biologic drugs, when I talk to my counterparts in other districts, they're all dealing with the same issues that I'm dealing with as far as high cost and how to better control that. There's only so much cost shifting you can do to employees, right? And we don't always want to do that, but we want to, we want to offer the best program we can for the best cost. And that's a struggle, is trying to make sure that we're correctly funding our health plan. But you are correct, we're not there yet. To be honest, going five and a half years, I wasn't here at the time, that was a long time to go without some funding in your health plan and not something I, if I had been here, that I would have recommended. And I realize priorities shift and there's other needs that took priority, and I totally get that. But that's what happens, is now we're having to put all this money in. And as we're seeing, as we're trying to make up, then we hit a bad year again. So here we are, back here again. But you're right. Really, it's our healthcare. And as to the savings of our centers, we do get some data on that. And the return value per year and medical and prescription costs per member is 3,000, almost $3,500 per member, per year. And savings based on trend is 2.23, the ratio to 1. In other words, the cost in the community and the value of what we're getting in our health centers compared to the cost in the community is superb. I mean, we definitely are getting, you know, we're getting some specialist referrals, but what I really think we're getting within the centers is the coordination of all that care. Referrals, you know, getting things under control and looking at that holistic vision, which is really where we're trying to refer people with moving wellness in under Healthstat. We're trying to refer all of that under one roof, right? So that when somebody gets in there, that we can really provide all of that support. And we've got, you know, we've got several success stories, you know, that we actually have, and every time we talk about that, of course, it's de-identified. And most times, people aren't willing to come out and talk about that, but it is inspiring when I do hear those stories. And thank you. Hopefully, that answers your question.
You do, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hey, Ms. Fortney?
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Yeah, I sit on that committee, and I think part of the issue is letting people know what we do offer and getting them. I think we would be more, we're trying to be more proactive in educating our staff as to what is available. But I want to focus on COVID for just a second. Mrs. King, is there any COVID relief that you know of that could kind of bail us out a little bit from our losses, from the federal or state level? And then my second thing is, are you aware of any kind of grants to expand our clinics?
I have not looked specifically at grants to answer the second question, so we can definitely explore some things with Mr. Baldwin and his area to see if there's perhaps something available with that. Now, as to COVID and any federal relief, to be honest, we are not aware of any at this time. We're always trying to interpret what's coming down from the state and federal government to see if there is a way to shore up some things. But to be honest, at this time, it's just speculation and inquiries. We don't have any hard and fast, you know, dollars that we know we can use for that purpose.
But you are, yeah, I'm sure, pursuing. Thank you.
Well, we're certainly inquiring, yes.
Any additional questions? Mr. Allen?
Yeah, great, thanks for the update.
Sure.
Really appreciate your time. Was curious, you know, when we look at that 90% capacity, have we looked at the possibility of extending hours or anything like that?
Yeah, we actually were looking at expanding hours, and then COVID hit. So we decided that really with the telehealth, we were able to handle quite a few things that way. We did also add Teladoc quietly in April, just to expand, because then we were still struggling in the community, to be honest, wasn't ready to offer telehealth. So we threw that out there just as a, you know, assistance with people trying to get doctor visits and care at home. So we can certainly explore expanding hours again. The difference would be maybe a Saturday afternoon, we're only open till, I think it's noon or 3:00 right now, I can't remember. I always get it turned around. We're offered like half a day on Saturday, and if we expanded to Saturday afternoon, would that be worthwhile? So it's definitely something we can take another look at.
Okay. Second question, looking at that projection, to really get to that 60-day threshold, I mean, I'm saying what, like 20, 34, or something like that? Is that accurate to say?
Well, with no other changes and assuming healthcare trend stays the way, it's just, it's hard to predict what's going to happen in 2022, you know, in 2023. It's just very difficult. Allison, do you have any comments on Mr. Allen's question?
I think the 60-day is potentially a pretty long way off, and it's, and you're not the only group in that situation. I think the maintaining, staying on the trend where you're going to at least be adding something to surplus each year, and the letter that the Office of Health and Church Regulation requires is not, not a harsh letter, not a big form or anything. So I think what I've been told is just the amount of money that that 60 days is for a plan of your size, it's difficult to reach and difficult to maintain. And so I think keeping your eye on building up something so that you've got a significant surplus is a goal that is attainable.
Yeah, good. So I think the leading to that question, what I wanted to ask was, if we're looking at, you know, $3,500 per member savings, how does that translate to, like, comparison to the cost of building a new clinic?
And it really will come down to capacity, you know, people using it and, because utilization really drives, drives that cost down. You know, the more we divert away from, you know, fee-for-service types of services that would be paid through Blue Cross Blue Shield, you're already paying staff. That's the way the model is, you know, it's all passed through on staffing costs. So you've got the infrastructure. It really kind of all boils down to staff costs, so paying for providers, paying for the lights to be on, extended hours. So the average cost per visit comes down, the more people, the more that people utilize the services. Their estimation is about a 2.3 to 1 ratio on the return on investment, that if those members had gone out into the community to have those services rendered, that it would have cost you two, you know, 2.3 times more expense for that to occur. And they're also providing some specialty care in addition to primary care. And, you know, the model, sorry, the model is really somewhat of a patient-centered medical home. And to be able to provide folks that maybe weren't ever even going for services because the copayment was prohibitive, or they just didn't have a primary care physician. And so providing that access to care, the testimonials and some of the things that are shared, it's life-saving. So it's kind of hard to say exactly what behavior would change, but, you know, the more we have access for people to be able to establish that healthcare relationship and engage in their health, I think the better opportunity it'll be to make, you know, lifestyle and behavior changes that might help them not become one of those, you know, catastrophic types of claims. But, you know, those are, those happen, and they're going to happen. There's just a lot of factors that drive why we have so many high-cost claims and so much cancer and so many things. But a lot, you know, the evidence is that there are a lot of behaviors that if they were modified, would prevent that from happening for many people, not everybody, but for many people if that, it's an investment upfront. But you have people through retirement, you know, you, people stay at the school district, and so you have them. It's a worthwhile investment for governmental entities like yours and school districts like yours to try to get people engaged.
Thank you.
We've seen a lot of stress too in behavioral health issues that have increased in the last year. It's been an unfortunate year for a lot of people, and it's really had an impact on their overall health.
We have a question from Ms. Miller, and then another one from Ms. Fortney.
I have two questions, and I know I'd sent this along, but can you just confirm the ages of who the clinic serves? Because I had some questions about who they were serving.
Yeah, it's actually age 2 and up, and that's for episodic care for children. We don't have a pediatrician on staff. That would be an additional expense if we ever decided in the future to maybe add that service. So we only see children from, you know, 2 to, like, you know, teenage years for episodic care. And we do encourage them to have a pediatrician in the community to follow them because there's a lot of things with children that, you know, we can treat the ear infections and those basic things, but for, but not for routine care. So it is mostly adults that we're servicing for primary care.
Thank you. And I have a question for finance. I understood that CARES money could be used if we have health costs that are coded for CARE, for COVID concerns, because that's part of what that money was sent for. Is that something that is allowable, or have we looked at that?
We're currently looking into the CARES Act 2 funding for this, and also in regards to the CARES Act 1 funding. The way that it appears on the surface, it cannot be used to reimburse these health fund claims that we've already paid out, but we're still inquiring, as Ms. King had said, and going down that path to find out if there's a way we can use it or how we can, how we could make it work. But at this current point, we've been told no.
And who are we being told no from? I'm just curious.
That we're researching through the paperwork we have received from the federal government. However, no actual allocation has been made yet to any district from DOE, and we don't, we don't have those funds yet or the ability to spend them until we receive communication on how it will be distributed, when it will be distributed, and what we can use it for.
And you're saying that it might be, we might at one point be able to use it, but we wouldn't be able to retro back?
If we are able to use it, yes, we could go back to March of 2020, I believe.
Okay, great. Can you, can, we have for the record to update the board when you finalize what you'll be doing or what you find with that?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Ms. Fortney?
Ms. Miller must have read my mind because that was exactly what I was going to ask about in the coding, because when you said COVID-related expenses, I'm hoping it was coded to where we can take present CARES money and be proactive in getting rid of some of this deficit. So thank you, Ms. Miller, for reading my mind again.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Yes, Ms. Reynolds?
Hello, and this is going back a little bit to adding another facility. Have we looked at all into doing a mobile facility that could visit school sites? I've seen a couple of the mobile buses for Central Florida Healthcare and things like that, so I don't know if that's something we could do.
We actually did. Healthstat's recently had a, had a, I guess what you call a merger with another company. So we'll be exploring that as an opportunity also, because as I said, we're at 90% capacity. We're going to shift, we're going to shift the management of the clinic over to a different position to allow the, we have a nurse practitioner doing that now, so she can be available then to see more patients, which is what we really want. And we're going to have a different position actually running the day-to-day operations, so, which is really the current model, but we're under the old model. So that will help relieve some tension, but we also will need to be looking at other things. So mobile, we have been approached by one mobile provider before the pandemic, but it would be, again, an additional cost, but yes, it could be an alternative to, you know, the capital cost of opening a third clinic.
I mean, a third clinic would be great. I just figure for some of our friends in Prosperous or Mulberry or some of our outlying, that if we could, you know, every Friday, go to a different school and make it easy access for them, that that may, obviously, if you need emergency care, that won't work, but if you, just for a routine checkup, that may be helpful.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Fields?
This question is for Ms. King, and she might not be able to answer it, but historically, I remember the 60-day being something that we've discussed for many, many years. Have we ever been at 60 days? And you don't have to answer that today, but I think that'd be very good for us to know.
Well, I think based on, and Jan, you want to go back? But I think several years ago, we were at that.
Can you see the slide that's on the screen now? So.
No, I can't, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. So in 2013, the 60-day safe harbor was almost $13 million, and the GI balance was 13.4. So you had probably 60, at that maybe, maybe even 62 days, maybe 63 days at that point back then. And you still were exceeding your 60-day requirement in 2014 and 2015, but you started in 2016 dipping below that number. So, and then, you know, with no changes, that really exponentially decreases your balance. And, you know, when your trend is going up, so your expenses are increasing, but your revenue's not changing, you eat up that surplus and those reserves very, very quickly. So you pretty much depleted those, well, the reserves were depleted completely in 2017. Basically, you had a little bit of a balance, but in 2018 is when you were very far underwater.
Which slide number is that? Is there a number on that slide?
Slide 5.
In your packet.
Okay, and then it'd be nice to know, historically, if you went back 10, 15 years from today. years from today, what would that look like as it relates to 60 days and what we had?
Well, there were times when you were negative also. I think you probably remember this, Mrs. Fields, because you've been on the board for a long time. So there were times earlier, uh, than the 2013 plan year, uh, when it was very, um, dire in terms of the surplus balance and it was had, you know, red numbers, red, red numbers on, uh, on both the gain or loss in that case, as well as what that did to the GI balance.
Right, it's been up and down.
Yes.
Thank you.
But I, we can send, I've got all of that data. If you'd like to see a slide that has that, uh, history, uh, I'd be happy to share that.
It'd be nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Any other questions at this time? All right. Uh, not seeing any more questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Great presentation.
Thank you.
At this time, uh, we have IDEA Public Schools School of Hope Operator, Mr. Brian Warren coming to speak to us.
Thank you.
My first remark is the document I provided to you is a Microsoft Word version of the strike-through document that I had uploaded previously to Board Docs. If you looked at it with detail, what I've learned in the process is when you file save as a Microsoft into a PDF, it accepts your changes. So I wanted you to be able to see the changes that staff interacted with IDEA charters on relative to, uh, the negotiations to bring us to this place today, uh, to discuss, uh, the performance-based agreement that also is in your Board Docs in its final form. What I would like to do, I know we have a timeline that we're working on, but if you would work with me, if you wanted to bring up your final, uh, PBA, as we refer to it, the performance-based agreement, uh, that we're, uh, looking to enter into with IDEA, I want to go through and kind of summarize some of the points page by page. You can scroll through on your computer. I also have hard copies of that PBA if you would like one, uh, physically in front of you as well. But if you will look with me on that final PBA, we're gonna take some time and go through some of the, some of the components. The last time we were before you, we were working out just a couple of the details. We have reached resolution on those and, and we're happy to be here in front of you today to present this final document. It is coming to you in a back-to-back process today. Uh, we can review it today in work session and then you'll see it presented to you for a board vote and board meeting this evening. So if you will now look with me on page number two, just in summary, section one, um, the term of the PBA is, it's a five-year performance-based agreement. It commences Jan, uh, July 1 of 2023 and it ends June 30th of 2028. Uh, this is the startup date for IDEA Lakeland, uh, which is slated to be August of 2023. Next, we talk about the PBA renewal. Uh, it is on a five-year basis. There are three components for renewal, uh, or, or, or not renewing, rather. If the school fails to meet the requirements for student performance established pursuant to the PBA. Second, if the school fails to meet generally accepted standards of fiscal management. And third, um, a material violation of law. The next, uh, summary I want to provide is item E, location. Um, they have provided to us already in the notice of intent, the location would be Crystal Lake L, Griffin or Kathleen Middle, uh, relative to a, the school being located in the attendance zone or within a five-mile radius of those schools. On page three, grade level served. It is a, it is a, uh, a walkout implementation, a five-year implementation. The first year of its implementation would be K1, 2, uh, and then in the middle school, 6. And then you can see the gradual progression of just adding, uh, grade levels per year for a full implementation, um, year five for a K5 program and extending six through eight. And then freshman and sophomore for high school as well, nine and 10. Uh, letter G, student recruitment and enrollment. You can see the numbers, uh, outlined for you for the total projected K-12 enrollment for those years. Um, in the notice of intent, if you broke it out in detail, you know, they do, uh, split that up relative to how many elementary students and college prep students there are in those total numbers. Um, of those total numbers, um, it's committed that 60% of those, uh, will come from the attendance zone of the persistently low-performing school as outlined on the previous page that we just discussed. Page number four, we talk about maintenance of student records as required by statute, uh, much like what we would see at any of our traditional schools. Uh, we'll move to page number six, ESE students. There is language here that is clear in the fact that, uh, ES, exceptional students shall be provided with programs implemented in accordance with law and ID, uh, IDEA. There is an academic accountability component in item J, specifically on page seven, uh, by October 15th of the first year of the school's operation, which would be August of '23, by October of that school year, October 15th of that school year, the school shall provide its proposed academic achievement goals for the current year to the district. The items that are below kind of outline a process for review of those academic goals and what happens if we don't agree and what happens if they're not met. Letter D is we provide a review and a status of the review of those goals within 30 days. Um, by October 15th of the second year of the school's operation, at that point in time, the academic goals that are provided, uh, by the school will be for the remaining years of the contract or this performance-based agreement as we're reviewing it today. The district shall review the proposed academic achievement goal again within 30 days. Uh, there is a provision in letter, uh, at the end of letter F and letter H that the, uh, goals can be adjusted at any time mutual, uh, consent is, uh, agreed upon between parties. Uh, it's important to draw your attention to letter G, that the, annually, the school shall report its performance against the academic goals that we would agree on at the time that those are implemented. Uh, if the school falls short of the academic achievement goals set forth under the provisions of the contract, the district shall report those to the department, and that's referencing the Florida Department of Education. Item two is assessments. Uh, they will offer all of the state-required assessments as we would find in, in any of our schools. Uh, page eight is regarding their revenue, uh, coming from state and local. This is much like what we're used to with our other charter schools, uh, with it being driven by the, uh, FTE and the student counts that are submitted to, um, to the department and, and then processed through the district. Item number three is the distribution of funds. Uh, this was an item that we did discuss, that one of the items we were holding on when we were before you last, uh, as, as, uh, the, uh, as, as Mr. Miller was, uh, reaching out to his contacts in the Midwest, uh, to see if we could accommodate. But, uh, the distribution of funds will be over 11 monthly payments rather than 12. So that follows the suit with how in finance we distribute funds to all of our other charter schools as well. So for us on the district side, that, that creates efficiency relative to how we are processing with all of our other schools. Um, moving over to page 11, talking about financial reports, uh, we will receive, the school will provide a quarterly financial statement. Again, that's required in the, uh, HOPE legislation. And they will undergo an annual financial audit, much like we're used to with our other schools as well. Page number 12, the school has to, uh, comply with all applicable provisions of the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act, and those citations are cited there as well. And then, uh, section M, uh, to summarize non-renewal and termination language, the district, uh, shall make student academic achievement for all students the most important factor. As we go through the process, the district may choose not to renew or terminate the PBA for any of the following reasons set forth. They're very similar to where we began relative to failure to achieve the academic performance set forth in the PBA, or failure to meet the, uh, acceptable standards of fiscal management or a violation of law. Uh, looking toward page 14, uh, it, it outlines the process. If, if we have a, a situation where some of those academic goals, if there's a provision that's not met, it outlines a process that we're gonna notify the governing board in writing, uh, 90 days, uh, upon non-renewing or terminating, the district issues a non-renewal notice of termination. And it goes through the logistics of, of how that works, um, with the final number six, upon notice of termination or nonrenewal. The school may not remove any public property. This is a common, um, uh, process that we're used to with, with our standard, uh, charter contracts as well. Uh, there are some post-termination provisions that, that where the school shall not, or I'm sorry, the school shall be responsible for all the debts and the district shall not assume that debt. And item number two, in no event, uh, shall the district be responsible, uh, for any leases or debts obligations incurred. Uh, so we are not responsible in any way in that regard. And then third, it's important to focus on our students, that in the event there is a termination or nonrenewal, the students, uh, would be enrolled at their home school, um, in their district school or any other school consistent with our student transfer procedures. Um, page 16, we talk about transportation that the school shall provide, uh, transportation to the school's students consistent with the requirements provided in statute. And, uh, the indemnification, it's a standard language. And letter Q, I wanted to talk about a minute on page 17, which is our pre-opening documents that they provide to us, much like, uh, our, our other charters that we're used to, which would include a lease agreement or ownership documentation of a facility, a, uh, a verifiable CO, uh, saying that they're eligible to occupy that space. We've got all of our fire and health inspections in place, as well as documentation of fingerprinting of staff and the governing board members and contact information for those governing members. The miscellaneous provisions that follow on the remaining pages of the contract are, are really, uh, legal, uh, legal ramifications that, that would apply to, um, if, if something happened in the contract, we could lean on counsel to, to help us through those provisions. I do want to say that in the strike-through version of the, of the performance-based agreement that I provided to you, um, we are pleased that we're able to be here to have resolution and, and agreed upon PBA to present to you. Uh, we took the template of the PBA, uh, presented by the Department of Education, and we also worked to implement components that were congruent with what we do in our charter template contracts as well to arrive at the document that's before you today. So in the interest, next interest of time would be to take any questions that you may have to help you be prepared for this evening, uh, this, this evening's vote. And I think I probably want to also say, joining me, uh, in the gallery is Mr. Miller as well, if we have questions that may come up. So, uh, Mr. Hill, would you like to direct me through the questions?
Yes, sir. Thank you. So, Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you. Um, can we get a final copy of, with the strike-through? It appears that the copy that was uploaded here is not the final version because it still has the 12 in parentheses and the 112 payment, so...
Right, that was the strike-through that didn't say it properly. I have a final one as well.
Okay. If, yeah, if we can just get an electronic copy whenever you have a chance, that would be wonderful.
I'll call a file. I'll have to send it in Word, I believe.
That, that's fine. That works.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Perfect. Thank you.
We've got, Ms. Amato has provided me a clean copy for signature, so they can email it.
So we have Ms. Fortney, then Ms. Miller, then Mr. Wilson. Ms. Fortney?
Yes, thank you. Uh, Mr. Warren, uh, page 11, uh, the financial statements and audits in page 17, the documenting of fingerprinting, uh, et cetera. Who pays for all that?
Uh, the financial audit would be at the expense of the school and we would review the final audit that's provided to us. Um, the fingerprinting would be at a cost of the school with us reviewing, um, the status of those fingerprint results.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Miller?
I think they, they covered both of my questions. One, a final copy. And two, since we're not collecting administrative fees for the school, have we designed à la carte, um, costs? Are we charging per, um, service provided or how are we managing that?
Uh, Ms. Miller, if there would be a service that the school would want to, uh, discuss with the district that, that is not, it falls outside of the statute, um, that would be, I guess if you use the word à la carte, we would discuss that on a, on a case-by-case or service-by-service basis to enter into a fee structure for that particular service.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Um, I guess I missed this before and I find this curious, but I think the law says that HOPE schools operate to, in zone areas where we have persistently low-performing schools, within a five-mile radius. I believe that's true. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Bridges, as far as you know? And I missed this before, but this, this is expanding to high school. Do we have a persistently low-performing high school in, where they're gonna be putting their school?
These schools listed in the notice of intent were Crystal Lake Elementary, Griffin Elementary and Kathleen Middle. So those would be our zone.
Yeah, but this is, this is now extending, extending to a high school. And I don't know that we have a low-performing high school within five miles of that area, right? So that's problematic, I think.
I do see your point. Um, may I invite Mr. Miller to come up and perhaps speak or address that question?
Thank you.
Suzanne, great. Good afternoon. Um, so you, you are correct. Our school, all of our schools are K-12 schools. The way the statute is written, it, the, the school that we offer does not have to match all of the grades of the persistently low-performing schools, or only the grades of the persistently low-performing schools that we open near.
Um, and I know, Mr. Miller, you and I have talked about this before, so I'm gonna ask this question again and I, I apologize if I, if I seem to be repeating this. But I, I, one of the things that I'm challenged with in, in understanding is, um, from my research, there are really three ways that you can address the needs of at-risk students. And the reality is, for those students who aren't at risk, we do a wonderful job of, of ensuring appropriate education. I think the key, the key here, what this was intended to do, was to address the needs of at-risk students. And from my research, there are basically three ways you can do that. Number one, you can do it through adding resources. We can bring additional teachers and pairs into the classroom. We can add, uh, technology. We can make sure they have the books and the things they need. So that's one way of doing it. But your school won't have any additional resources that we can't provide. The second way that is often discussed is pedagogy. But I can't find any peer-reviewed research indicating that pedagogy works. Uh, there are a lot of, there's a lot of anecdotal research, but I don't see any peer-reviewed research. And the third way is counseling students out. Is there a method that you know that, that somehow, what is it? Is there something else that, that works in, in ensuring that, that at-risk students are well-served?
So, um, I, I think that there are lots of, of ways. Uh, you know, the way that we have approached it, um, is through a, a rigorous curricular approach that is, that is aligned to the standards. Um, it is how we allocate resources in terms of, you know, our, our selection of the people that we're gonna put in the classroom. We believe that we have a, a really strong, uh, teacher evaluation approach to make sure that the teachers that are in the classroom are the very highest-quality teachers and those that are not are supported, um, to, to improve, or, um, we, we find additional or other teachers to, to bring into the classroom. Uh, there, there's no silver bullet, if that's what you're, you're asking. I mean, there is no, uh, we talked about this last time, there's no magic sauce, there's no magic curriculum. It, it is, it is a, a lot of hard work. Um, and I would, I would say that I think that you're right. This district has done a really great job, but not just with students that are not at risk. I think there are some real examples of schools, not only in Polk but across the state, that are serving kind of historically underserved communities that are doing a really fantastic job. I, I don't think, I don't think it's unheard of. I don't think it is, um, I don't think there are not many examples of this already happening.
Okay, thank you.
We have a question from Ms. Fields?
Thank you. Uh, this question is for Mr. Bridges. On page number nine, uh, item number two, Millage Levy, uh, Wes, can you... two, millage levy. Wes, can you explain that to me, please? If you were to go for a millage and get it approved by the citizens, it says that we would have to provide funding, some of the monies to idea. Am I reading that correctly?
I'm looking at page nine.
Number two, millage levy.
Okay, I've got it on page ten. If applicable, the district will provide additional funding to the school via any applicable capital outlay or operating millage levied by the district as required by law. So if there were an additional levy that we were required to share with charter schools, we would be required to share it with the school vote.
Okay, so I am correct. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bridges.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions for Mr. Warren at this time? All right, one more. Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Miller, I know you and I have had these conversations, and again, I don't in any way, shape, or form doubt your sincerity in doing a great job here. I just think it's interesting that, not you necessarily, that those who would suggest that our teachers aren't working hard and aren't providing, you know, the types of efforts that our students need. And that's not an indictment of you and your organization. I just think that's a little troubling to me, but anyway.
If I may, Chair. I want to be really crystal clear. I did not insinuate that in any way. What I was talking about is our approach to how we work with our instructional personnel. So I want to be really clear that that was what my comment or my response to your question was. You asked about how we do it, and I said that this is one of our approaches is through what I think is a really robust, refined, and strong teacher evaluation system.
No, I understood that. Thank you. There doesn't seem to be a clear strategy, and that's what's striking to me. So I'm wondering how that gets done. I still cannot conceptualize that, and that's okay. Maybe along the way, we'll find that out.
And if I may, Chair, I'm sorry, I would offer this to all the board members, that we're going to have in five months from today, our first schools open in East Tampa, and would love to have you come and see it for yourself.
I'd like that. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Miller?
I just want to provide maybe a little bit of insight. It has to do with legislation and charter schools having the ability to be more creative and do more with services that our traditional public schools, everything is mandated to the very second of their day, and that's part of this process. We could be more creative, but we have, there's so many DOE mandates to tell us what we're going to do, what time of the day you're going to read it, and how things are going to be on your wall. And the charter schools have the opportunity not to operate that way. So I could see how that is creating an environment that may be more conducive to creativity and teaching. So I think this is a bigger discussion that we can have here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you. I just have a question about the recruitment and enrollment. That sixty percent inside of, or coming from a persistently low-performing school in that attendant zone or in an opportunity zone, it says that that is the target. Is there, and this may be more of a question for Wes on a legal standpoint, is there any way to hold them to that, to make sure that we have at least sixty percent coming from? Because the last thing, obviously, you know, one of the conversations that came up with Schools of Hope is if you have a persistently low-performing school in North Lakeland and drive five miles, you could end up on South Florida Avenue in the middle of Lake Hollingsworth, which is obviously not a persistently low-performing area. So how do we make sure that we are serving those students, and is there any way that we can hold them accountable?
I think the main criteria in the statute is the location of the school, not the percentage of the students that actually enroll. It's required to be placed in an area that is, where it would serve the population attending that school, but you can't require them to go.
If the party was willing, is that something that we could codify in a contract?
I'm not sure how you would do it. The students have to choose to go there.
Right.
Certainly something we can look at, but I'm not sure how you would restrict it.
Because if they don't apply, then there's...
Yes, ma'am.
And not saying that that's, I know in our conversations, your intent has been those lower-income students, but at the same time, we want to protect ourselves and make sure that it's not, it is serving the lower-end students as it was intended to do by the law, but how the law is written and the intention don't always align.
And if I can also add to that, in addition to the requirement around the location, we are also required to provide automatic enrollment for those students, so they get in before any other students. So the way that we do the lottery, and we just completed this in Tampa, is that we run three different lotteries over several months, and the only kids that can get accepted in the beginning are students that are zoned or attending the PLP schools. The second lottery, it's the same thing, and not until we go through three, if we're not full, do we then open it up to any other student within the district. And I'd be happy to follow up and get you the percentages for our first, you know, our first two campuses in Tampa, what those percentages looked like in terms of where those kids were coming from, because we did, we just had our third lottery, I think we had seventeen hundred applications for about a thousand seats.
Okay.
And there is a provision in the statute that says that when HOPE operators are selected, one of the criteria is that the percentage of students eligible for free or reduced-price lunch under the National School Lunch Act, enrolled at all schools currently operated by the operator exceeds seventy percent. So you do have that.
Okay. And I guess my second question would be, as far as high school students, since they don't have a persistently low-performing school to pull from, what would the criteria be for, is it just a free-for-all, or is there anything, looking at neighborhoods that maybe are with these? I don't know what it would be, but...
Chair.
Thank you. I mean, certainly our goal is that the kids that come with us in sixth grade stay with us through, so the students that we're getting in the early grades or continue with us through high school. If we have openings in high school, we would certainly, at the ninth-grade level, we would still be looking at the PLP middle schools, if there are persistently low-performing middle schools within that area. And then the other priority that we also have to offer to families is if they live in an opportunity zone, which is a low-income census tract. And we'd be happy to discuss, you know, other ways if we get to that point where we have a bunch of openings in high school, making sure that we are targeting the students that the district feels are going to be, you know, going to benefit the most from our program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Fortney?
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Yeah, I just want to avoid any issue with what would appear to be cherry-picking what we have left in our public schools that already struggle because of competition from other charters and our own magnets, et cetera. And to piggyback on what Ms. Miller said, you know, the bottom line is, we can't really stop you, and not that we want to stop you, but if we had the creativity from the state down without being hen-picked every five seconds, we probably wouldn't have those low-performing schools to begin with. And I just want to make that public. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
I just have a question about the high school enrollment, because I know, I'm thinking of Bridge Prep and other schools, when they take in students they want to continue all the way through, they wouldn't take it, like, when you're high school, are you going to accept eleventh graders or twelfth graders, or do you stop it, you have to be in at ninth grade to continue?
Yeah. Chair, I'm sorry. It's a great question, so...
We're not great with Robert Rules of Order here, so that's fine, thank you.
I'm very used to making sure the chair is okay with my responding. Thank you. Great question. So typically, what we have done is we have accepted students in ninth and tenth, but at eleventh, we don't. Because of our AP-for-all curriculum, it would be almost impossible for a student to be able to complete those number of AP courses in just an eleventh and twelfth grade. So that's been the typical process that we followed. Again, happy to continue this discussion, and as we get closer to high school students, if the district has ideas for how we should, you know, be targeting recruitment efforts, if we have, you know, attrition between eighth and ninth-grade kids, find that they maybe want to go play, you know, football for their, you know, their home zone school, would welcome those conversations.
I have one more question. There's a lot of dollars spent on marketing with your schools, and I talked to one legislator, said we should do a job of going out in the communities and marketing the neighborhoods of the most high-risk kids to send them to your schools. I don't know if I agree with that, but that was the idea, since that's what your specialty is. But other than, do you do door-to-door, or are you relying on billboards and television, radio?
Chair, we do a tremendous amount of door-to-door. So we, again, and it was challenging this year due to COVID. We had to shift some of our approaches, not only in Tampa, but in other regions as well. But we still managed to do socially-distanced door-to-door. We also did, we participate in a lot of community, like nonprofit fairs and organizations where we're out, we're just meeting people. You know, we understand that in the early years, when we don't have a building that people can see, we don't have something that people can touch, that's going to be critical to go out and start building that trust and making those connections within the community. So we do a fair amount of door-to-door.
Thank you. I want to make a correction. It's academy prep. I don't know why I would ever confuse them with Bridge Prep, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Allen?
So this is really fun conversation, because I don't think the conversation is binary in regards to options and choice options. I mean, I think if we even look within, we have so many great things that are happening within our district as well. I think Cambridge being one that's on our agenda for discussion today. So, and then if we look collectively, I think the most advantaged families in our community already have choice. So here, your school offers a choice for our most disadvantaged, with a track record of college success. And I appreciate that, and I think that's a great thing to consider in this. And I was just looking at your enrollment figures, and I'm looking at like a point-five percent approximately that you're targeting within that first year, and then by, you know, year five, we're looking at maybe getting to one percent. So my question is, you know, what kind of impact would a point-five to one percent, what could that have on our community, if we're seeing college success at that minutia, but for a very targeted population of disadvantaged students?
Chair, through the chair, I'll just say through the chair.
Feel free to answer questions as we go along.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir, please.
Thank you, ma'am. So you're right. I mean, we are with a single campus in Polk County. We are a very small number of students, a percentage of students. I would say for those, you know, fifteen hundred kids that are in our school, and, you know, the graduating class of, you know, a hundred and twenty every year, it's potentially life-changing for those students, especially if they were not, you know, on a track to get accepted to go to and go through college. So while, you know, it is a relatively small percentage, we do believe it's, you know, a major impact for those families. And the other thing that I hope is that as we get established, that we can partner with the school district, we can learn from each other, and maybe there are ways that we can really, you know, expand that impact through collaboration.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. This is at Crystal Lake, near Crystal Lake, correct? That you're planning on establishing your school near the Crystal Lake area, correct? Is that right? So that's our community school, where those students get extra resources. With our partnership, I think that's with Polk Vision, right? So I'm wondering, I guess, what's going to happen when they aren't getting those resources and they move to your school? How, do you have a way of providing those extra resources that they need, like counseling and medical services and things of that nature?
So I'm not familiar with all the resources provided at Crystal Lake. So I don't know that I can do a compare and contrast, but certainly we have social-emotional counselors and social workers on our campus. We work really diligently in the years before we open to identify those nonprofits that we can partner with to provide those additional wraparound services, based on, you know, what our families need or what the community is looking for.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Warren. Ms. Amato, Candy Amato, please come forward for our next item on the agenda, the Matter Academy Incorporated Charter Application Presentation.
Good afternoon. How is everyone?
Great, how are you?
Fine, thank you. Before I introduce Matter, just a couple things, just to keep you up to speed in regards to the charter application review process. We have already conducted the capacity interviews for the five charter schools. We are in the process of getting those converted into a Dropbox, so that you will have access to them. They're very large to email. Each interview ran about an hour and a half long, so you will get those shortly, hopefully by the end of the week. March fifteenth, the charter review team will have its final meeting with Vicki Mace and providing their feedback and expertise in their areas. They will then make a vote at that time. On April thirteenth, at the work session, we will present to you all the findings from the charter review team, and then on April twenty-seventh, it'll come to you for a final vote. We do have five applications. If you recall, the last work session, Matter Academy experienced some quarantine issues, and they were unable to attend, so they are very thankful that we were able to squeeze them in. They do have two applications. They submitted a K-5 elementary and a six-eight middle school. These are a high-performing replication, so their process of application and review and approval operates a little differently than the traditional charter So at this time, I'd like to introduce the representatives from Matter Academy. We've got, and I promised, I may butcher your name, I apologize, Shanine Sadowski, Taylor Smith, and Erica Sanchez.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for having us today. We really appreciate you letting us come back, and sorry about the quarantine issues. We're going to present both the K-5 and the K-8 together as one presentation. And again, my name is Shanine Sadowski. I'm one of the Matter Board members. I'm going to let my colleagues introduce themselves.
I'm Erica Sanchez, and I am an aspiring principal for this campus.
Hello, I'm Taylor Smith. I'm a consultant to Matter. I've been here before, meeting various stakeholders over the last five years about becoming a partner as more than just a neighbor. Great to be here.
So, thank you. So a little bit about Matter. Matter Academy is a high-performing network. We like to say we're kindergarten through college, and our goal is always to deliver a K-12 experience, so we're starting with a K-8 for now. And we have a college prep and career readiness focus, even starting as early as kindergarten. I have to change this myself. Okay, here we go. Okay. Matter is a not-for-profit charter management organization, and I have personally, over two decades, on the board, and we've existed for over two decades. I'm really proud that we started in South Florida, and now we have quite a few schools all over the state of Florida and central Florida. But we are a high-performing charter school system. We're tuition-free. We have a proven track record, and I think this is most notable about Matter, of closing the achievement gap among high-minority and socio-economically disadvantaged students. Matter serves nearly eighteen thousand students. Eighty-two percent of our students qualify for free and reduced lunch. Ninety-seven percent are minorities reflective of the surrounding communities. Matter oversees twenty-eight charter schools. In Miami-Dade and Osceola, twenty-five of the twenty-eight are Title I. We have four schools in Nevada, and we actually also have an international virtual academy in Italy that works with our schools in Florida as well. I'm going to let Taylor talk a little bit about this slide and about why we want to come to your community in Polk County.
Thank you very much. And I know you've seen, read through the application, so I don't want to be redundant, but we've been a neighbor to you and always looked up to Polk County. We've been in Osceola County. It's twelve minutes away from the Davenport-Lowman area. We have watched and learned and tried to listen through the students that attend our schools from Polk County. We've just been waiting for the right time to apply, to come before you, and to become a partner and not just a neighbor. Based on the growth, and again, over the last five years, I think I've talked to Pam a bunch of times. I've come down a couple of times, and we had a large stakeholder meeting with one of the county commissioners, who's a builder in the Davenport area, and we were just waiting until we felt like we could be the best partner for you, and not just a neighbor, and bring home our Polk County kids that are enrolled in the Osceola County Matter schools, but bring them back to polk... Matter schools, but bring them back to Polk and serve you in a high-growth area by adding K-8 capacity at our cost, but also being a, a local partner. And I, our principal lives in Davenport on Ronald Reagan Parkway. Our team is there. Our, we have teachers that want to come back to Polk, that live in Polk, that work for us in Osceola. And so we're very excited, and we, we, we're trying to be a surgical, helpful participant in your overall K-12 system. And I do have been involved in charter schools all over the state of Florida. And I can tell you that I've been looking forward to the time when we could come to Polk and not do anything other than help and be a helpful partner. So it's great to, to be here, and, and the stats speak for themselves, in my opinion.
So just as a point of reference, in case there's any confusion, we have Matter Academy Palms, and it's 12 minutes from the Davenport site where our proposed school would be located. And so that's what Taylor is referencing when he talks about that, in case you weren't familiar. We're going to tell you next a little bit about our program design, Ms. Sanchez.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you guys again for having us here today. As a current school site administrator in Osceola County, but a resident of Polk County, I'm very honored to be here with you today. One thing that I feel is important for you to know about the Matter Educational Network is our commitment to high achievement and success in all of our students that are enrolled. We have a high percentage of students that are an ELL population, English Language Learning population, as well as an ESC population. And one thing that is important to note about us is we have a real commitment to every adult for every student in our building. It's important to us that we attack with rigor, relevance, and relationship every student that comes before us, that we have the opportunity to serve each and every day, whether that's through an integrated science, technology, engineering, and math curriculum, or whether that's with dynamic progress monitoring through iReady or other intervention programs that we can utilize to further boost achievement and success. In our middle school, we're very proud of the way that we are not only able to enrich students' educational and academic experience, whether that's through double dosing every student in our building with their math and English Language Arts curriculum, but through doing dynamic pull-out, push-in, intervention instruction to support struggling learners, to provide them opportunities to achieve greatly, and to close the learning gap. We have pre-AP courses. We offer dual enrollment courses even at the middle school level. We also offer high school credit courses at the middle school level. Courses like geometry, algebra, biology are all accessible to our eighth grade students through their enrichment. We are a spring board curriculum campus as well. So that's the College Board College Prep Curriculum that's utilized in our English Language Arts and Mathematics Department, and is rigorous, and again, focuses on that college preparatory mindset for our students. We strive and achieve in a meeting the needs of all learners, again, whether that's our English Language learner population or our special education population.
One of the things that makes us very successful is that we're very individualized in targeting our students. So we use iReady, and we make sure that every single student has an individual plan, and we're constantly monitoring that. And that's how we have come to have a now 98% graduation rate ultimately in the Matter Academy schools. But from this, and we welcome you to come visit our schools anytime. One of the things you'll see, like even from a young age in the elementary school, is they're already talking about college, and they're already talking about career and their future. And it's, it's embedded in them from the time they enter our school. So a lot of our success is really the culture that we create, and I think it's very unique. I've been in quite a few schools over the years, and each school has its own formula for success, but I'd say that's a cornerstone of ours. One of the things that we're so proud of is when COVID happened and all the schools shut down, I think this largely had to do with also our virtual academy. We were able to seamlessly transition. We had the infrastructure and the resources to seamlessly transition into the, the virtual learning, the RLI. So I'm going to show you a little video so you can see what we mean. Everyone, look back and say good morning to our friends that are on remote live instruction with us.
I'm going to be sharing the screen for right now. You can just follow.
How would I get to 18? Can you show us before I?
Very good.
Okay, class, take out your QR code scanners.
Yes, Michael, you have a question?
How many did you get at the floor panel?
What did you learn from the floor panel?
Welcome to the classroom of the future!
Thank you. And I know we need to move quickly through the rest of the presentation because I do know that we have, we're short on time. One of the things that I know is important in Polk County is the relationship and the partnership that we will have with the county and the constituents in it. We are very excited to collaborate with your county. One of the things we know that's very important is safety and security, obviously in this day and age. Our director of, National Director of Safety and Security, William Tagle, has actually already reached out to your sheriff, Judd, to talk to him about staffing and some of the safety things that we need to put into place to make sure that we have a great environment for our students. We will be reaching out to the community, working with not-for-profits, visiting local churches, visiting local community centers, holding parent workshops, attending different HOA Association meetings. It's part of not just our recruitment efforts, but also in order to establish relationships with local individuals and businesses. Taylor, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I, I just think that as a long play, we're here for the next hundred, we would like to be your partner for the next 150 years. And grandchildren's, grandchildren, we would like to think would be partners here in Polk County. But we see, I see Matter the same way we have a partnership in Osceola as a performance-based Polk County school. I mean, we're operating under a performance contract. I listened to you and Adam Miller go through the Schools of Hope contract, but it's something that it's a, it's a high bar for us to serve. But we know at any time, we're your performance contract vendee, and we, we are here at your pleasure. And the contract, I think, is very specific, and Matter has done a fantastic job year over year. But I would welcome, it, it would welcome the board to talk to your counterparts in Osceola. We just want to keep reiterating that we're, we're local, we're neighbors, but we want to be partners. And so from facilities to planning, to Dr. Pace, to the board members in Osceola, Matter has done a fantastic job elegantly serving the district and not coming in ways that, that it was not at the benefit of the district, in, in my opinion. And thank you.
And as a benefit, you know, as you can see from the graph on, on that slide, there, you know, the schools are being close to maximum utilization, and we hope to help alleviate that with adding another school choice in the Davenport area. This is another little, really short video. I think it's 30 seconds, just to show you a little bit about the inside of some of our Matter schools.
Oh, real quick, we didn't have Davenport Elementary data when we did our, our chart, so we know that would be great to put it in. We just didn't have it when we had the deadline to cut off. Sorry.
Hopefully this will play. I think we're having a little trouble with this video, so I'm going to just move on. As far as a network of support, I know one of the concerns sometimes is that the two schools that are being replicated are schools that are located in South Florida. Those principals will be coming here frequently. Obviously, we've all learned that through technology, we can have constant communication. But we do have schools in the central Florida area, including Erica and I think back here somewhere, there she is, is our principal that's 12 minutes away from the Davenport site, Monica Cueto, who will be working. And I know as a, as a longtime board member and my fellow board members, we visit often. Our chief academic officer is constantly up here. So there will definitely be a very hands-on approach to this new school opening. We want to make Polk County proud of Matter, and we want to make your county shine. And so part of that is we want you to know that, you know, we have a very successful, very recognized school. We've been in U.S. News and World Report for Best High Schools. We are Saks accredited, or Cognia now accredited, which we were one of the first charter networks to do that. We have multiple Blue Ribbon Schools. We're a Verizon School of Innovation, and so many more. So as far as the community outreach, we do plan to market to the general area. We want to give Polk County residents priority, obviously, when we're going to be initially marketing. And I spoke earlier about some of those ways that we're going to market and establish partnerships with the local community. As far as the Matter Academy structure, just to clarify for anybody that might have questions about that, the Matter Academy Governor Board obviously oversees and makes the decisions about everything. We do have a chief academic officer, who will be very hands-on, who I mentioned, Ms. Judith Marty. She's a, quite a veteran educator. And for those that haven't met her yet, once you meet her, you will never forget her. We also have Robert Blanch, who's our president. And then we, we have a Director of Grants, and that's our general structure for how we operate. Finally, our last slide, Matter is a very financially stable network. We are a triple B investment-grade rating. We have great projected growth for future enrollment levels and over $150 million in reserves. We just were awarded a $53 million grant for replication expansion of high-performing charter schools. So that's going to be able to help us with making sure we start up a high-quality charter school and bring a great program to your community. And we're just really excited to be here and excited to work with you. So thank you for giving us the time to present.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Miller?
I just have a few questions. First, I love your energy. I think we can all feel that. That's exciting.
Thanks. This is on no caffeine for three weeks.
That's amazing.
I am having sugar, though.
And I, you know, what I've learned about Matter Academy, I just had a couple of questions. So you, you have been designated a School of Hope, but you're not operating here, is that? You're operating here as a high-performing replication.
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that changes things as far as who you're serving. My question is, will you be serving people from Osceola as well as Polk, or is it just going to be Polk County students?
That's a great question. And we were actually asked that at our interview last week. So while we can serve students from all counties, our goal is to fill the school with Polk County residents. So in order to do that, we would structure an initial enrollment period, because we obviously do enroll on, in a lottery process. So we'd structure an initial enrollment period, or periods, just for Polk County residents, and we would make sure we marketed to that, or just the Polk community. At, if at some point the school was not filled to capacity with our projected numbers the first year, we would be open to taking enrollment from other counties. But again, ideally, I want to emphasize that we're targeting Polk County students, and that's what we hope to fill the school with.
And that's my next question. Four out of five of these applications this cycle are for Davenport, as well as this $80 million high school that we're opening. Also, Charter USA is on their third deferment of not opening in Davenport because of how many schools are going into Davenport. So I heard you say something about Davenport Elementary numbers and stuff. Are you confident you're going to be able to fill the seats with Polk County students? Because I'm, I'm a little concerned that we have lots of schools opening.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Just to piggyback off of something that was mentioned earlier, right now, at Matter Palms Academy, which is located in Osceola County, we do have a lot of kids there that are traveling to us from Polk County. And we've seen the increased interest in, as to use a phrase that Taylor used, to bring those kiddos home, to really have them engage in a neighborhood community school that has their friends of where they live and where they are currently residing. So I do think that we will be able to support the enrollment projections as indicated.
And I appreciate your mentioning of students who with significant needs, either in ELL or ESC. My question is, you're a college-based, college-focused school, and that always doesn't work for every student. So that is your focus. Do you teach, do you offer access curriculum or the Florida Alternative Assessment? Or are you focused just on Florida standard kids?
We offer both. When we have students that need the access, we do do that. Our, our graduation rate is based on students that, you know, are, are a myriad of different needs, whether they're second language learners, whether they're classified as exceptional students and, and have IEPs, our Gen Ed students. Yes, we're college and career readiness, but we get 98% of our students there.
So when I hear from parents, I can, I can assure them that application status is not based on support need of the student.
Absolutely not.
Thank you. Because I'm, this is a recording.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Of course, no problem.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Oh, I have one last question.
Sure.
I'm sorry, does not proper chair, am I allowed to ask another question?
Of course.
Oh, Mr. Hill, thank you.
Yes.
Your management company or your, or your, or your management is, it is out of Miami. So you have a lot of schools in the area. Do you meet, do you have meetings where parents can access you in, will you have them in Polk County?
Yes.
Okay. And is any member of your board a resident of Polk County?
No, but we are willing to have a regional advisory committee if necessary. You know, we have our school advisory council. Like I said, I can tell you personally as a board member, I'm here all the time, you know?
I think that's very important to our constituents.
Yeah.
They want access to the boards of these schools who are managed outside of the area.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Ms. Marty as well, our chief academic officer, is constantly in touch with parents and does in-person, one-on-one meetings, like locally. So yeah, they can expect to see a, a very live and active presence, presence, no matter where we live.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, we're going to have Ms. Angela Usher and the ABC team coming forward. Madam Chair, we, we have a 3 o'clock today, so we're going to try to move as quickly as possible.
Yes, sir.
But still give due diligence to these next five items, three of which are discussion items.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. The discussion item is for the boundary for Bella Sita Elementary. As you know, the school is scheduled to open in August 2021 with a design capacity of 996. We worked with the boundary committee with various option, and staff tries to limit the movement of students from one school to the other. But in high-growth areas, sometimes this is very challenging to do. I have with us today presenting this, Mr. Copan, Coney and Mr. Sharpless. The chair and the vice chair are not available, so Mr. Coney and Mr. Sharpless, it's all yours. I don't know who will do the, you want me to do the powerpoint? Or do you want to do it? I also have staff available, Mr. Duncan, the regional superintendent for the elementary school, and I have Pam Lusu, staff to the ABC also present.
Okay. All right. So as you all know, we have the boundary for Bella Sita Elementary School that we're going to talk about today. We had a community meeting with this last week, last week, last Thursday. And yeah, so we're just going ahead and discuss it. This is a concept art for the school itself. So first, any questions or comments can be emailed to our email address on top of there. Bella Sita Elementary School is going to be opening in August of 2021. So this is, this fall. It's going to be located on 20 acres, and the student capacity is 966 students. And this is a K-through-5 school, and it's intended to provide relief for Citrus Ridge, which is a K-through-8 school, but it's going to relieve the elementary level. It's another concept art of what the school is going to look like. We analyzed five different options that was presented to us. I say we, I mean the attendance boundary committee. And out of the five different options presented, option five was the one that was the best one, according to the committee. And so that's the one we chose. And you can see I-4 right there, as well as 27. It's, the school is north of I-4 and just east of Highway 27. Here's the, the data for Bella Sita Elementary School, proposed option five. You can see a difference between the, first of all, it's 727 for Bella Sita Elementary would be the total new enrollment. At Citrus Ridge, you can see the enrollment for the elementary, so pre-K-through-5. The total new enrollment would be 616. And then we broke it, is, we broke up the data to show you the 6th through 8th as well, because the purpose of this school is to only relieve the pre-K-through-5 enrollment. Okay? So that's, again, where we're at. So with portables and without portables, So with portables and without portables, again, this is opening up Bellicita without portables, so it's the same capacity. It's at 73% what the capacity would be, according to the data, which, of course, the target that the district gives us is 75% enrollment capacity when it opens. So that's pretty close there. And then you can also see without portables, this brings Citrus Ridge Academy to a 97% capacity. So is there any questions from the board?
No questions? Okay. All righty, thank you very much. If there's no questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We greatly appreciate it. Thank you for your work.
Yes, thank you to the committee and everyone who was involved. Appreciate your time and effort.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right, we're doing item 5, the Florida, State of Florida Auditor General Information Technology Operational Audit. We have Dr. Barrios with us today. Thank you.
So good afternoon. We had an IT operational audit, which is an audit that's done every several years. We had two audit findings. The first was on access privileges, and that had to do with some accounts for focus contractors and some of our administrative accounts. Part of that was due to the implementation phases that we were in. We have since gone back and relooked at that and changed some of the privileges and reduced the numbers that had system access, system-wide access. So we've corrected the concerns that they had for the first finding. The second finding was on security controls. That is actually a confidential finding, and there are a few areas in there where they pointed out several areas of concern around security controls. But between the Meridian Project that we have currently in place with all of the governance, the things that they actually discussed with you, the findings, I think it was a couple of months ago, some of those will be addressed, some of the audit findings will be addressed through that process. And we've also had several of our current vendors do security reviews with us, and we're in the process of making some of those corrective actions. So we feel like we're in very good shape. It's not uncommon, it's not uncommon for districts to have some of the same kinds of findings. And there were some things that, because of the COVID in the past year, that in terms of some of the password changes, that we, policies that we had to relax a little bit just to be able to function through this past year. But we are addressing each of the findings that we had.
Madam Chair?
Yes, and I just want to say thank you to Ms. Barrios. I was on the phone, of course, with the Auditor General when this was discussed with her and her team. And, Board members, you can be really proud of our IT department. They work very, very hard. And, yeah, we've been through some unprecedented times. So to have the few findings that we had, when you listened through each one, you kind of went, okay, I can understand where that might have happened during these times. So I just want to commend you, because I know how hard everybody works. And there wasn't a roadmap as to how to handle these individual situations as they came up throughout COVID. And I think you and your staff, with your leadership and your staff, have done a tremendous job. And I was just so proud to hear a lot of the positive comments that were made, as well as a few findings, which is totally natural. So I just want to say thank you on behalf of us and the students that you serve. We appreciate what you do.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Questions? Ms. Miller?
I just want to ask, as you complete the updates and things that you're doing, can we have, can you come back with that as you progress or provide the board with the updates as things are corrected or changed?
Sure. And if, just as a reminder back, it's really been just a little over a year, but what we've done is about every 18 months, come back to the board to show you where we were in 2016, where we were in 2018. And we recently did it in, actually, December of 2019, to kind of show you the progression around security, accountability, and things. So we did that, but again, due to COVID, we have not brought that back, but we can certainly do that.
And I appreciate those. I remember those. I appreciate that. But as of the findings that you are working on, that you found, more of an update on the progress from that?
Sure. We can certainly do that. Yep.
All right. Any additional questions? All right, thank you, Dr. Barrios. Thank you for you and your staff, all the hard work. And Ms. Ann Everett is approaching to review the student progression plan.
Thank you. Thank you, dear.
I am here on behalf of several different departments that have updates for the SPP. So I think you had a copy, and then there's some updates in this one that should hopefully clear up any other questions you may have. But there were three, most of these changes really are updates to state rules, clarifications of some different things, nothing major. But there were three that I thought we probably wanted to point out and see if there were any questions about, because they are new or have a significant change in them. The first one is page 52. And this one, if you go to the change document, they are done in order. So if you kind of look at the first page, it's changes, obviously, to the front cover page. And again, everything else is just basic updates, state rule changes, link updates, that sort of thing. But if you get to page 52, that's the beginning of, no, I can't get there, of something that's new for us. So we do not have anything formally in policy that dictates what dual enrollment credits will be accepted, or what kind of credits from other programs or out-of-state programs, that sort of thing. And we've had many, many requests for different types of programs to be posted to high school transcripts in the past, and we've kind of dealt with them one-on-one. But we haven't had anything in policy. And so we've had a couple of different requests and conversations kind of begin at the high school level, where the administration or counselors call and ask, do we have anything formalized? And we haven't had that. So kind of requesting that we do something and have something to reference. So looking at other districts, we researched several different districts. They all have a pretty basic policy that looks very much the same, which is if we have an articulation agreement with that post-secondary institution, we will take those credits as presented on their transcript, post them to our high school transcript as well. If it's not, then that's something that we're just not going to include in the high school transcript as a general point of reference. However, we do want it in there that if, for some reason, someone wants to petition to have it added to their high school transcript, we can certainly do that and go through the process to consider that posting. Questions?
Any questions? Good.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
And then the next one is right under that one. This is also brand-new language and references AP students that are home education students, taking AP courses. And they are asking to take courses, or take their exams with our schools. And we've always accommodated that, but we've never had a specific policy or procedure in place for schools to reference, parents and students to reference. So this basically says that if a home education student wishes to take an exam with us, then we will absolutely accommodate that from their home school and kind of go through that process. But it's just something to have in writing so that everyone can reference that one. And then, other than that, everything else really is just a clarification of current processes and procedures. IB, I'm sorry, IB in the ACE program to specify how students will attend which of those schools based on their current residence. That language is formalized from Acceleration and Innovation. And those truly are the substantial changes. Everything else just really is an update of statute language or rule.
Yes, sir. Mr. Allen?
Mr. Hill, appreciate the information. I was curious on the controlled open enrollment change. That would be, it was referenced on page 11. So prior to this change, you had one month that was allotted for in-county residents, and then one month allotted for out-of-county residents. Now we've minimized that enrollment period to one month. Any rationale? What was the, to me, that limits the opportunity to pursue that controlled open enrollment for parents, you know, around our district?
So I am representing that portion of SPP. I really don't know. I will definitely get that answer and provide that to Mr. Hill to share why that date was, or the timeframe was changed. Right? Okay. So I'll get with Information Services and find out specifically why that change was made and share that with you.
Thank you.
Great.
We'll make a note of that.
Awesome. One more thing. On the, reference the page 52 that you were drawing attention to, is that in relation to the Cambridge transfer credits as well? No?
No. It's simply when students go and they attend maybe a travel program over the summer. And a lot of those companies will advertise, oh, you may possibly get high school or college credit for those. And so they're coming in with that type of thing. And that's great, we want to support that. We encourage students to pursue those interests, but we're just not going to post it to the high school transcript.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions for Ms. Everett? Yes.
I don't know if you're the person to answer this, or if somebody else in the room. For the IB zones, has Auburndale always been to Barto? That may be a John Miller question. Sorry.
I see a nod.
They have always been?
Affirmation.
I didn't realize that. They just seem like they would be closer to Haynes City is.
When we drew the lines, here's the go.
Okay.
Yep.
Sorry, John. I saw it when I was reading it this week, and I meant to ask, and then I forgot, so I apologize. I didn't give you a heads up.
Now, Auburndale is currently, pushes to the Haynes City side. The language in the SPP would push it the other way.
Why is that? Just numbers, or? I just, I mean, obviously, if they live closer to Haynes City, I'm sure a lot of them would prefer to not get up at 4:00 a.m., maybe to only get up at like 4:30 a.m.
Right. Yeah, and the issue has to do with splitting it at some place.
Okay.
So are you saying right now, I mean, parts of Auburndale do flow to Haynes City, but don't some also? I'm trying to remember where the lines split when we did that.
The zoning for IB isn't based on necessarily the students. Well, everything does tie back to their resident address, but it's tied to their high school.
Their school.
It doesn't, it's not tied to what middle school they're in.
Right.
So if they're zoned to go to Auburndale, they currently only have Haynes City IB as the option.
Option, okay.
Part of the change, or the proposed change in moving Auburndale to the Barto side is a bigger picture of what we're doing with
Tennerock.
Multiple IB and multiple Cambridge programs, if we need to do that, and to try to balance numbers and look at where we're receiving applications from some of our communities and ensuring that students in different parts. So while geographically, Auburndale is fairly close to Haynes City, it's much closer to other schools that could possibly have other programs. Did that answer your question?
Clear as mud. Yes, no, that answered it. But that, I think that's the only school that changed, is that correct?
There was another change. I think the Old Lake Whale Zone, because of an issue with Haynes City IB, sometimes Dundee Ridge Elementary, or Dundee Ridge Middle, some of the students that attend there actually reside in the Old Lake Whale Zone, which pushes to Barto.
So they, those two are flipped.
So when they would do recruiting there. And I think also, Lake Gibson High School is a school that now pushes to Haynes City IB, but I think that was listed in there as under Barto as the IB program. And that had to do with trying to have some consistency in where the schools in Lakeland. We have an issue right now with some of our middle schools. Students are at certain middle schools, say Lutton Childs, for example, where, I know that's a choice school, but some of those kids are getting split up because of their residency in Lakeland, pushes some of them because of where the split is. Lake Gibson currently pushes to Haynes City. And Lake Gibson is not, is close to neither, to be honest.
Right. That's what the mileage for Lake Gibson to Haynes City is.
And the same thing with Frostproof in another school, but in looking at the numbers and looking at the applications that we receive, trying to ensure that there is some sense moving forward beyond just this year with IB in communicate. Certainly, we would look at situations where a sibling is already in a school, and we can override that, but trying to move forward with more of a community, even though it's still based on what high school they're zoned to, but there's a lot of confusion we receive from parents or points of consternation where they live on one side of the street. But eventually, we, you have to put the line somewhere. So these were ideas that we're putting forward at this point.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Is there any type of petition process if, because what I don't want to see us doing is telling a student, you can't be an IB because you have to go to Barto, even though you live in Polk City and, you know, your kids, a lot of kids can't get up at 4:30 in the morning to get on that bus.
A lot of adults can't.
A lot, yeah, I couldn't do it. So that's why I didn't go to IB. So I just want to make sure that we're not taking opportunities from kids because of where we're requiring them to go. I realize that we need to have some sort of, we don't want everyone to pick one of the IBs over the other and have
Right.
population issues. But I also don't want us to not provide students with opportunity if they have, you know, if they're able to transport themselves and they are planning to go to
Right. Yeah, the current policy is what was approved in the SPP last year and for X number of years since Haynes City IB has existed, is that if they're zoned to a particular high school, that determines what IB program they're eligible for. The only caveat, to my knowledge, is that if a parent worked at that school, but there is not a process that I handle where a parent could petition to go to another site, and quite honestly, in the corners of the district, the northwest corner or the southeast corner, they're going to have to get up super early wherever we send them. So currently, to answer your question, wherever they live, that's what they're eligible for.
If they're participating in, like, for example, Barto has the Construction Academy, Haynes City does not, if they're a student that's participating in an academy, does that have anything to do with whether or not they'd be able to also do IB at that school?
I'm going to refrain from answering because it's out of my purview.
Okay.
If you send that question to us, we can get that answer for you.
Okay, absolutely. I just want to make sure that we're not limiting students' options based on where their address is. So, but I'll forward that question to you as well.
All right. Ms. Miller?
And being a school board member that represents both Auburndale and Lake Gibson, I do know students who have chosen, who live near Polk City, or, you know, that side of Lake Gibson, driving to Haynes City. I don't know that there's an answer until we build a program in North Lakeland, and that's, we're going to have to look at numbers and what that looks like. But it's a concern, because that's a rural area, and the kids have minimal, I mean, I get approached with, there's less opportunities for them.
And Tennerock kind of opens some of that, right? I mean, that was kind of the idea behind that.
I think that's maybe a discussion for a later.
It's a discussion for a later date. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other questions at this time? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Everett, for representing several different departments and our People Progression Plan, reviewing that with us. Madam Chair, at this time, we have two informational items. The first one is the CARES Act geared data informed supports grant. Do we have any questions or concerns on that? We have Mr. Baldwin here, if we have a question.
Yeah, I think I do.
Okay.
So is that, is that particular role, my understanding when I read that, that particular grant that we're receiving is that particular grant that we're receiving is meant to service the increase of data necessities that are going to be required moving forward? Is that my understanding when I read that?
That was our understanding as well. The intention of the grant was for the district to hire a data specialist to perform those functions of the extra data responsibilities that we are going to have to perform due to increased progress monitoring. However, in looking at the availability of funds, the funds cease to become available in September of next year. So hiring a person for six months was not going to be feasible, so we're looking to contract that work out.
I see. Okay.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions? Mr. Wilson?
Actually, this is just a comment. So this is just, and this is just a comment. It's not directed to you. Please be assured. This is just an additional compliance expense that we encourage the school district that hampers our ability to compete with high performing charter schools. It frustrates me because our, our state seems to want competition and foster competition, but we have so much money we spend on compliance that we can't get those resources into the classroom. And this was just an opening for me to make that comment, so please excuse me. I am frustrated by that. And I'll have some more comments to make about that later tonight. But thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just continue to add to this conversation. I agree. Maybe our perspective on it is parallel in some way, but, you know, we're, we're speaking about creative freedom in the classroom and heavy compliance. And I'll probably speak to this later as well. I don't think we should forget, two thousand nine, there was an economic downturn and we, you know, this would have been the race to the top program. And, you know, this, this is the birthing of the VAM score. So I think we, we have to be careful and I just cautious us to consider how the impact on the classroom looks long term.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Our last informational item is the financial statements for period ending January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. And that concludes our portion. Madam Chair, if we.
Okay. Board members, now we come to our board agenda review for the meeting tonight. So very quickly, give you a minute to get to your board agenda. Let's look at items A through items E. Opening items through approval of the minutes. Any questions? Okay, items F and G through the consent agenda. Okay, next we have H, action agenda through the public hearing I. Uh huh. Ms. Miller?
I have a couple of questions and I don't, you can, you can let me know if I should ask them now or tonight. I don't know if staff will be here tonight is why I'm concerned. From what I pulled from the agenda, which is H, number two.
Yes.
Okay, I don't, I guess, I don't know how you want to call people up. I'll ask the chair the questions.
Go ahead.
So Cambridge, the Cambridge program at Tennerock is something that's been worked on for a while. It was actually brought to us this time last year and I asked it, and in the recording, they were going to bring it back to work session and it came back to a consent agenda. So for the minutes, I would like to request that when we have these things that are supposed to be back for the work sessions, it gives us time to review them and ask more questions. It's helpful not, not to push them right to the consent agenda. And the reason I pulled it is I'm very proud of the work that Tennerock has done to get that school ready for Cambridge. It's a little different and I want to be transparent with what that program looks like for the community and for the staff and the work they've done. Back in July twenty nineteen, I met with Mr. Miller, who I think is exemplary at his work, and talked about the decrease in opportunities for high performing students at Tennerock. I had one or two students approach me that were AP students and there were very few courses available to them. So when we met, we reviewed the demographic of that school and I learned that almost half of their ninth graders have repeated at least one or more grades. So that was my concern at that time, that we met all of the needs of all the students in that, in that school. So we looked at academies and I know staff thought an attractor academy would be appropriate and they came up with Cambridge. And we have a grant out that, whatever I understand, we have not heard back from. But we're going to move forward. And my question is, are we moving forward just with the Tennerock program? Because the original program was for a triangle between Code, Blake and Tennerock. So my first question is to define if this is just the Tennerock program. Second, the funding to open this program, since we do not have the grant information back, is being used from testing from Winter Haven High School's Cambridge and AP programs. And I don't know how Winter Haven High School feels about that, or if we're going to be able to repay them back with the grant once we receive the grant for this program. And Cambridge will allow opportunities for students. This program will be different than what you see at Winter Haven High School. There will be no academic requirement. There will be no reference letters required. The idea is that you open up so all students, we raise the expectations for all students and they can all take part of it, which I think is a positive thing. I want to be very careful in how that's presented to the community because in Winter Haven, it looks very different. You have to have an academic requirement. You have to have reference letters. So we want to, they're not going to mirror each other even though they have the same outcomes, which is furthering opportunities for students, which I think is a phenomenal idea. So my concern is the dollars being spent, if we're going to be, if we get the grant, are we going to be able to repay Winter Haven's program so they can reinvest? Or maybe invest in Lake Gibson or other areas? I've kind of, I'd like an answer for that, that mainly. And then is there a long-term investment for academies in that school that will reach ninety-eight percent of those students? Because if half of their ninth graders are repeating, those kids, we can give them access to Cambridge and let them take those courses, but in reality, we need to meet the needs, we need to meet them where they are and offer more than just the attractor for the high performing students. So those are my two comments.
Okay. Do you want?
Mr. Hill?
Mr. Miller?
Whoever's here.
Do you want to address that? And Mr. Warren?
Thank you for the question that you put out. I'm going to hit a couple of them and then I'm going to defer to, to John to help us with some of the others with the specificities of the questions you've raised. The first, one of the questions you raised was regarding the grant status. I believe you received a communication that went out, you know, to all board members. You're referencing with specificity the Magnet School Assistance Program Grant. That's a federal grant that we've applied for. We still do not have, or have we received, what we refer to as a GAN, which is a Guaranteed Award Notice. What I can tell you by process and by what has occurred is we have been in active discussions with the federal government. We have been to the table no less than three times with the Office of Civil Rights. So we know they're looking at our application with a lot of detail and interest. We know that we've gone through a change of, of, in DC from, you know, with the United States Department of Education. So we are anxious and anticipatory of a notice shortly. We literally watch every day, every week for that to come down through one of our senators or from the House of Representatives shortly. Now, to your question of repayment, it's, it's for that reason that we've tried to be strategic for how we proceed here because we continue to wait for perhaps that grant opportunity to present itself. But if it does not present itself, we've been fortunate enough to have a backup plan to continue with the program implementation at Tennerock relative to Cambridge. And that's where John can speak in just a moment relative to some of the funds that are generated and how there is a break even place when a program grows to a certain level to regenerate funds to keep it growing on its own. To your issue of repayment, you know, it would be my intent, if upon grant funding, you know, then we're going to quickly drop back and pivot to work on implementing several of those components relative to the feeder schools that you spoke about or otherwise for that program.
I just want to say about the feeder schools from the community aspect.
You, you mentioned Blake and you mentioned the, the entrance, the entrance piece because specifically with that Magnet grant, the schools would, or Blake would have a feeder structure and they would have Cambridge experiences at Blake, which would set them up to be in the Cambridge mindset curricular, for the curricular program at Tennerock as they would feed to there and have that priority and option to them. So it's for that reason that Winter Haven and Tennerock would be different, but there would be a prerequisite feeder with Cambridge background that, that would be unique from the Winter Haven piece. Does that, does that answer that piece? Because I want to talk about the, the numbers that we generate and how that would help absent of grant funding, how we're moving forward in this process.
Specifically to Code, because the parents I hear from want more opportunities that they feel like are not available at Crystal Lake. So they're leaving Code in third and fourth grade to go to other magnets to feed into other schools. So this would provide, at this time, before the grant is, before you hear back on the grant, are we going to have a program for those Code parents? Are we going to have to wait to get the grant to help implement this at Code Academy?
Quite honestly, I think, I think we have to be prudent with our monies, you know, that we're, that we're using relative to getting the Tennerock, the high school program started as that first priority, realizing that the next priority would be that, that, that eighth grade feeder and then ultimately driving that down into the elementaries as well. But that would be almost a, a third layer down with that priority. With grant funding, it would be unequivocal. We'd have it and we'd have right what we needed. So I kind of need to have some space there as we triage or prioritize to get to this end.
Do you think the difference in the programming from Winter Haven to Tennerock, do you think Tennerock will be able to generate the kind of funding that Winter Haven did from test scores? Since this is a different approach, this is more of a accessibility approach, kind of a overall umbrella. Everybody gets a taste of Cambridge. It's not the academic, it's not the same academic piece that Winter Haven has. So I'm concerned that, I would like to see the program grow. Are we going to be able to generate funding? Do you foresee us generating testing that will, because you have to pass the test to get paid. So are we going to be able to produce those tests to get increased funding from Tennerock?
I'm going to defer to John to be our expert on that one.
Well, first thing, let me preface this. I don't know how much time you have. I'm being respectful of looking.
We don't have a lot.
Okay. First, let me say to Winter Haven, they have done a phenomenal job in building that program. And certainly we have helped at the district, but they have been the boots on the ground and the community support and all of that. It's been a long process, over six or seven years for Winter Haven to get to the place where they are now. But Mr. Bridges can correct me if I'm not quoting the statute exactly right, but in state statute, one thousand eleven dot six two one subsection L or M. In the same way for IB and AP money, the state gives us an allocation based on the number of students that pass a test as point one six of the FTE and who earn a diploma. And by that statute, it says that eighty percent is supposed to go to the school that earned that. So obviously, when Winter Haven started five years ago, the same way it would be for another school like Tennerock that in its first year, they didn't have many students participating just in the beginning courses. But over time, particularly the last two years, they have generated a significant amount of FTE for the district. They earned eighty percent of that and we work with the school to make sure they have that funds. And over the last two years, the district, the twenty percent that the district has, has accumulated to a six-figure amount. So we, the district decision has been to support one of the middle schools in Winter Haven with supplies and building that program. And we have a point now where we are able to use that district funds. And I understand the point that Winter Haven kids took the tests and the teachers did that. But by statute, the whole intent is that that other twenty percent be used to build the program within the district, support feeder schools, like what we're trying to do with one of the middle schools in Winter Haven. So I would say that that twenty percent, of course, I'm, I'm not the person that makes the decision on how to use that, but that is available. We have enough from that twenty percent to get Tennerock up with, with their accreditation, their entrance fees, with PD for the teachers, with books. The issue becomes that there's not, there, there is still additional money that the district would have. If we did not have the grant, we would have to make a decision as to how to disperse the remaining funds and how quickly to build Tennerock. But the funds that, again, the Winter Haven kids were the ones who took the test, but the way the state statute is, allows for us to have twenty percent for the purpose of trying to expand throughout the district. And we've been very cautious with, with not utilizing that to, to get to this point where we are now.
Does Winter Haven have a middle school feeder Cambridge, like Blake would be? It would be Dennison?
Dennison is currently the one that, that we're supporting with that twenty percent.
Is it the same idea that you're going to do at Blake you have at Dennison?
Well, again, it was not a grant
Okay.
for Dennison, but what we, we have, and I don't want to get into too much specificity.
No, it's fine.
But we do have students at Dennison who are part of that program.
So right now, the program would just be at Tennerock and I know the teachers are excited. I know they're capable of doing this. My concern is the program is very different and will need a ton of support. And I want the district to be able to provide that support to the school. Second, is any of this money going to be used for transportation costs since we are already in the hole and we're going to be transporting kids? If this is a true attractor, we're going to be transporting kids to this from, we, we've struggled with that already in other programs. So is any of this money available for transportation?
That would be, that would be a matter we'll, we'll, we'll review and, you know, we'll also discuss with transportation as well. Your, your point is well taken.
Thank you. And I would like, and this isn't either, I don't think this is either of your departments, but I would like a further work session to talk about what we can provide at Tennerock in the vocational setting. I hear a lot from the community about what the school was designed to do when it was first built. And I think there's a lot of opportunity for community partnerships there to meet the needs of ninety-eight percent of the kids that attend. I am glad that we're meeting this and we're challenging them. I think that's very important. As someone who always preaches high expectations, I think that's valid. But I want to, I don't want to lose the kids who, the significant level of support that's needed there that may not be Cambridge students, but they will be successful in another area. So I would like to, to look into that for a further work session. Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Reynolds?
Can I, I just want to comment real quickly on the same agenda item. I am very supportive of Cambridge. I think it's one of the best things to ever happen in Winter Haven. And I can't speak highly enough of Mr. Miller and all that he does to support the Cambridge program. So while you're sitting here, I just want to say that. But I do, as it moves forward, want to see what the staffing plan looks like for it and things like that because we currently in the Winter Haven area, looking at IB and Cambridge and all of, there's a lot of discrepancies in staffing. So I understand that we need to put the seed money into it to get it started. But I would like to have a work session item in the future of what, making the four equitable so that they're all getting the same resources as they seem to be doing very similar programs. So I just wanted to, of course, we'll be supporting it tonight, but just to give that caveat as we move forward.
Thank you. Ms. Reynolds. Mr. Allen?
Great. I'm still ramping up, you know, in the onboarding process to wrap my head around the Cambridge program. But what I would say is the student that was featured on our social media, the graduation picture of her, Rachel Williams is her name, Winter Haven grad, went through the Cambridge program. She's now my advisee at Florida Southern and I just can't, I mean, I'm so in favor of, of that program. And she speaks very highly of that, of her experience at Winter Haven in that Cambridge program. So great work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions up through I, the public hearing? Okay, next we have our superintendent's report, which will be given by Mr. Hill. Our administrative and legal reports given by Mr. Bridges. Is there any questions on that, those two items? And Ms. Matthews, I don't believe, do we have a report tonight? No, okay, thank you. Okay, and then that pretty much concludes the review of our agenda. And all business is superintendent search. I'm kind of leaving that on there. Just a reminder to the board after this morning's meeting to please make sure that if you have any things that you would like to add into the contract to get those to Mr. Bridges by April the ninth, that's a Friday in time for him to be able to add it so we can discuss it on the thirteenth when we come back.
Ms. Cunningham?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Fields, go ahead.
The comments that we made this morning, did Mr. Bridges take note of that? Are we needing to submit that to him in writing?
I got the ones from this morning, Mrs. Fields. If there are others, please send them my way.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. New business and then board comments with the essence of time. We have about seven minutes until we have our step three grievance. So I would like to ask if we could hold and refrain with your board comments until this evening's board meeting, unless there's something someone needs to say. Is there anything pressing that can't wait till this evening? Anything pressing that can't wait till this evening? Okay. All righty, then, I would like to go ahead and adjourn our work session.